Welcome to the twenty fifth meeting of the liquor commission. When addressing the commission, please remember to state and spell your name clearly and to speak into the microphone. Uh we have some minutes to approve. May I have a motion please?
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the seventeenth meeting dated eleven fourteen twenty four and the eighteenth meeting dated eleven twenty one twenty four as previously circulated.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the uh regular and executive session meetings from the seventeenth and eighteenth meetings. Uh any nays or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the minutes are approved. Uh calling agenda item number one. Application number two five dash zero one four one zero from Aloha Bento LLC.
Captain and Chairman, members of the Commission, great initial authorization appear with the applicant. We have received investigative support. Have more changes and no corrections there too.
Let me go.
Yeah. Chair, for the record, uh want to state that I know the applicant is Sarah Hirunaka and Aloha Bento is a tenant in my employer's building, but that would not have any repercussions on me making a fair decision.
Okay, notice. Uh any questions?
No. No. I mean.
Okay.
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero one four one zero.
Second. Then moved and seconded to prove application number two five dash zero one four one zero. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number two. Application number two five dash zero one four four five from the Native Hawaiian Hospitality Association.
Aloha Commissioners, um my name is Malia Sanders, M A L I A, last name S A N D E R S. And I'm the Executive Director of the Native Wine Hospitality Association.
Uh can you walk us through your event?
Sure, of course. Um Ho'opu Hawa'i Weekend is a two day community and culture event in the heart of Waikiki. Last year, uh we received approval from this commission for our liquor license for the same event. And we are doing um a similar iteration of it. There are a few different um additions to our event this year, one being that we are partnering with K I T V Island Life Live and we'll be doing a live broadcast on property during the event. Um other than that, all of the same uh things that we mentioned in our application prior will apply for this event. And it's basically native wine vendors, uh native wine practitioners. And we take over the Royal Hawaiian Center for those two days, providing cultural entertainment and performances by practitioners and those from the community.
Commissioners, questions?
So just, oh sorry, just confirming on your floor plan. So the red box that's at the very bottom left corner, that's going to be the only area that liquor is going to be consumed in um or distributed in there?
That is correct. And we are actually hiring private security um at the entrance and exit to that red box area to ensure that alcohol does not leave that area.
And so the people that will be going in there, are they going to be banded upon entry or are they going to be banded when the alcohol is on their ordering?
So they're gonna be banded before they enter and their IDs are gonna be checked before they enter.
Alright, that's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then you have off duty HPD.
Yes, we do. Um there are actually two off duty special duty officers on premise at all times during the event.
Questions?
We've also hired private security as well.
Yeah. I have no more questions. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero one four four five.
Second. So moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero one four four five. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Mahalenui Commissioners.
Uh calling agenda item number three, application number two five dash zero one four five eight from Groove Child Charities.
Aloha, good afternoon, members of the Commission. Lance Suchio for Groove Child Charities. L A N C E, last name T S U C H I Y.
Okay, walk us through your events.
Uh so this is a music and culture event. We're gonna be doing it at Monoloa, Monolo Gardens in Salt Lake, uh right next to the freeway. You guys are familiar.
Have you used this venue before?
So the venue is actually huge. Uh we won't encompass the extent, uh the full extent of the venue. Uh we're gonna be closer to the freeway, approximately seventy thousand, eighty thousand square feet.
And how are you demarcating the?
So we have uh commercial barricades and uh riot gates that we bring in that we use for all of our events.
And I'm assuming everyone's ID will be checked prior to entry, correct?
Correct. We have, uh we're gonna have upwards of fifty something security personnel, including off duty uh sheriffs. Actually, some of our staff is off duty sheriff.
Okay. But um overall for this event, this is the first time you guys have done an event at
First time.
The Monolo Gardens, correct?
Time we executing on Monolo.
Okay.
Correct.
And then the other question I have is, so I seen that ticket sales, what is your current ticket sales app? If you know our fan.
Yeah, so we're at sixty dollars per ticket uh for the cost and ticket sales are not, we haven't uh marketed uh to our full extent yet. Wanted to execute on this here in person for me also. Very low, I under, under a thousand.
Okay, so only thing I would request is um that Friday before, I guess the fourteenth, if you could let our commission know, our administration know what your total ticket number of sales are, just so we have an idea. Um you know, if we get reports or something, we wanna make sure, yeah, there's not many people, what are we dealing with? That's the only thing. That's the only questions I have.
I have it.
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero one four five eight.
Second. So moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero one four five eight. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Uh calling agenda item number four, application number two three dash zero zero nine zero seven, MDH Holding LLC.
Uh with respect to agenda item number four, we have uh updated the board packet and provide you copies of a request from council requesting a uh uh two week continuance.
We had a motion for that or?
No.
Alright, thank you. Uh calling agenda item number five, application number two five dash zero zero three three five from nine one six Drills.
Good afternoon Commissioners, you sign of Hawaii. Naomi Call on behalf of the applicant present to my right is owner, Mr. Ferdinand Cardenas, but C A I D E N A S. We have no changes to investigative report.
Ms. Call, the outsides, is it corrected on the front part of your floor plan? There's some outside seating or is that indoors as well?
Uh outside.
Outside. And so what is the barricades or demarcation on the outside between that and the regular pathway or walkway?
Yes, it's a demarcation pathway wall.
Okay. Okay. And there's no way, there is no entrance or anything. I see the one door that's leading into the restaurant, but there's no way that they can get from that outdoor seating to the waiting area or the front entry doorway, correct? Except going to the restaurant.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero zero three three five.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero zero three three five. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number six, request number two five dash zero one four two four from K U Y Restaurants Limited.
Uh good afternoon, Chair Hong and members of the Commission, Neo Gota appearing on behalf of K U Y Restaurants LLC doing business as M W Restaurant. Uh could I request a one week continuance on this matter so I can work with administration? Uh I believe a incorrect floor plan was attached to the report. So speaking to investigator Sato, um we'll continue this so it can be corrected.
Alright. See you next week.
Thank you.
Selling agenda item number seven, request number two five dash zero one four five one from How's It Brewing LLC.
Good afternoon, guys. Justin H E I K K I N E N. Uh basically, nothing has changed on that from uh the current form. It's basically just trying to um add another year to the the tempers so we can get the permit going.
Okay.
Nice. Any questions?
None. Motion to approve request number two five dash zero one four five one.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve agenda uh agenda item seven, request number two five dash zero one four five one. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, ask about I, the request is approved.
Oh, thank you.
Alright. Calling agenda item number eight, request number two five dash zero one four three six. Newton J Chu, Esquire on behalf of Dave and Buster's. Hello.
Not Mr. Chu. Good afternoon, Chair Hong and Mayor of the Commission. Um Brian Che on behalf of applicant David Buster's at Hawaii LLC. Uh our client is experiencing some construction delays um and would like to request an extended uh record date for the standing on timber license, uh from March seventeenth.
Right. So before I make a motion, um I guess I'm gonna ask, you sure that you wanna say March seventeen and not request a further amount of time? Only because if you get to March seventeenth, you're gonna have to come back here and re-request the same request. So I'm just confirming that you only wanna say till March seventeenth, cause correct me if I'm wrong, if we were to say a longer date, if they finish by seventeen, they could come and pick it up at that point?
Well, this is uh picking the effective date of a tent where they would pick up, so it has to be done with uh some precision. So
Okay.
uh you go to March seventeenth. If you need additional time, you just need to make a further request.
Right, right. The March seventeenth date was uh determined by our client and that that's when they believe that it'll be completed.
Alright. So I have no other questions. Motion to approve, request number two five dash zero one four three six. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero one four three six. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the request is approved.
Thank you. Same Patty's date.
Calling request number two five dash zero one four four nine from Blackstone Security.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the Commission, uh great initial authorization appear on behalf of the applicant. Um basically, they're just cutting it back to one day, um their business um what they viewed on their business, you know, ongoing, ongoing business shows that it's not warranted to have for two days.
Okay.
You guys already paid for it and then, or how does that work?
Um I I can't answer the question, I'm not sure.
Okay. It's fine, but I just wondered. Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve request number two five dash zero one four four nine.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero one four four nine. Any nays or reservations? Seeing none, I ask about I, the request is approved.
Thank you.
All right.
I promised Doug back there that I'd be short so we could.
Alright. Okay, calling agenda item number ten, Liquor Commission, discussion of processes and procedures. And I believe we are gonna be discussing the reduced fee pilot program. Yes, Mr. Petey. Unless you wanted us to go into executive session immediately. Okay, alright. Uh pursuant to Hawaii Revised Statute, section ninety two four and subsection ninety four dash four A four. Consult with its attorneys on questions and issues on a matter pertaining the forge's powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities as they pertain to the topics that are permitted to be discussed on the future of processes and procedures outlined in agenda for the reduced fee pilot program. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Right.
Okay, we're back from executive session where we were discussing the appropriateness of some of the data that we will be producing. For evaluating our criteria for free reductions.
As Commissioner S discussed, the fee reduction pilot program is something that the Commission has been thinking about doing. And essentially it's a vehicle by which permanent license applicants have used or currently using the second one hundred and twenty day temporary license may submit their request for reduction in fees when submitting an application for special for license so that they can serve alcohol alcoholic beverages on aspiration second temporary license. At this point, I think in terms of that request, we're suggesting that certain information be made available for the Commission. This is some things that the question would have to provide the date, the transfer, the application and accompanying temporary license application were initially submitted to HLC. If applicable, the date, the new and standalone temporary license applications were submitted. The date on which first temporary license application was approved and date when it expired. And perhaps it's something that can be that can be reviewed simply because what you're concerned about the second one. The day of which second temporary license application is approved and the day on which license expire. If applicable, the day on which the latest special for profit license was submitted to HLC for approval, so as the end date of the special for profit license. Timeline of the communications between HLC and the applicant regarding errors in admissions found during the course of the investigation. The dates if applicable on which documents and information addressing errors in admissions found were submitted to HLC. The applicant should be prepared to discuss the above at a hearing to assist the Commission in determining whether the circumstance surrounding a particular application warrant to reduction fees. I think if you don't mind my summarizing, I think the Commission believes that the pilot program will afford transparency to the licensing process and provide financial relief to applicants relying on expensive non-permanent time limited temporary licenses to bridge the gap between application and approval of the revenue license. And the thinking is that when warranted, the Commission will impose a fifty percent reduction in fees under the pilot program.
Now operationally, is there going to be any complications in terms Complications in terms of implementation of this.
We don't believe so, you know, but I'd like the opportunity to speak with. With the kind of group to see whether or not there's something that that would be a concern to them.
So do you think by next week we can have a hearing on and a template of the requests? The data elements of the request, some of the background information on where we are in terms of processing and. And. Maybe. An example of what the workflow would be for somebody to make that type of request so that we can review it. Prior to an implementation, it's done not to be next week, I just want an idea of when you might be ready.
Yeah, we can prepare the format for you and also provide you with. Data on what's driving this initiative by the commission.
Questions? And so I hope members of the public, we should invite some of the. Counsel that. You know, argue for these special licenses to weigh in on the process next week. And item number eleven administrator.
Yeah, I think for deciding commissioners. I'd say that we did it this week, we welcome. A licensing clerk as well as an office assistant to to the. To the agency. This part we're trying to see. How we can best deploy them or at least. One of them, I think neighbor will be that. We may have to deploy something to assist the licensing group in terms of. Some very important things that that are currently being done and taking a lot of time from. From from the from the investigators themselves. So we're looking at that again, just trying to to throw out resources we can to to improve capacity. I I think. Just want to let you know that consultation periods. For, I think I mentioned constitution period for. Geolocation data. History as well as randomized routine inspection assignments. Lapse. Last week or so, but. Also this week, the interview for custody for body one cameras last as well. We have not, we have not yet received any comments, I'm sure we'll get something from. HGA, but we did not receive any any comments within the within the timeframe that was proposed to that. Those submitted to them.
Questions? Okay, agenda item number twelve announcements. Okay, we're adjourned.